I will call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ferraro. Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Peristam.
Here.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Here.
Mayor Bradley.
Yeah, he is excused for now.
We have a quorum. Our next item are public comments for closed session items. Our first speaker is Corey Cordova.
Thank you. Hold on, Corey. Do me a favor. If you look, they'll do it. Just, we gotta turn on the mic. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, my name is Corey Cordova. I'm the business agent for the members in RPV, local union, our park and rec and office part timers. And I brought a group of folks here with me to express their concerns and share their needs with you tonight. You know, I think the the primary theme you'll hear tonight is parity. You know, at the negotiation table, though the team is very cordial, professional, there is this idea of our part timers are different from everybody else. There's no real definition of that difference other than the different hours that they work. But they serve the city just as well. They're committed to the city just as well. We have many long-term members and we have folks that deserve to be treated equal with the other full-time workers in the city and to be shown recognition and appreciation for what they contribute. They go above and beyond the extra mile, you know, every day. I've come to become very proud of these workers, and so I'll leave the floor for them as they begin to come up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dana Torrey.
Do I hit the button or something to start this?
No, you're good.
Or you do? Okay. All right. Hi, my name is Dana Torrey. I'm a part-time employee here in the city of Rancho Palos Verdes. I started as an employee in 2017. I am here today to talk about changing expectations on a part-time employee. In 2017, the part-time employee duties were keeping parks safe, clean, and share park rules with park patrons. Most of the work on class schedules and property rentals were handled at City Hall. This all changed with the addition of scheduling software in the parks. Our duties increased to include scheduling classes and managing park rentals. My main job now is to review teacher class proposals, process teacher applications, request teacher W-9 forms, update teacher contracts, schedule classes in ActiveNet, create class marketing material in Canva, monitor student payments, process refunds, manage student transfers, review teacher invoices, and create purchase order change orders in Munis to make sure the teachers are paid 70% of the total income from their classes. I perform all these tasks while managing the day-to-day operation in the park. I'm expected to oversee rentals, perform janitorial inspections, monitor park attendance, maintain park safety, set up classrooms for teachers, clean playgrounds, empty barbecues, get the baseball field ready for use, submit service requests for park maintenance from Public Works, and typically walk five miles a day patrolling the property. I feel the expansion of our duties for the part-time employee warrant receiving a percentage of benefits awarded to the full-time employees. I am most interested in an increase for the part-time employee education budget. Also, I would like to see the expansion of class opportunities to include non-collegiate vocational training in the upcoming contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Marin English.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Marin. I think some of you know that, but I also think some of you don't, which is partially why I'm up here. I'm one of the people who set up all of this today, as I do a lot of the times. I've worked a bunch of city council meetings. So anytime there's, you know, you finish a soda can, you finish a water bottle, you need a cup, anything like that, I'm one of the people that takes care of that. One of the things that we're hoping for in our negotiations with this is for a shift differential. Part of the reason is because the full-time workers recently had their on-call pay doubled from $200 a month to $400 a month, which they receive for taking on duties outside of typical work hours. And that money is received regardless of whether they actually do those things outside of work hours or not. From my pers- from a personal perspective, about two and a half coming on three years ago, my dad had a brain bleed and was in the hospital for a very long time. So he has programs that he does during the day, but every time I'm here for a shift like city council or anything like that is time I'm not getting to spend with him. And it would be great to get some sort of thing for that time. Also, a lot of times the events that we have in the evenings are the ones that involve a lot of things that are harder to deal with. A lot of, you know, if we're ha- if there are parties that are happening here and there are drunk customers and we're dealing with the public and all of that different type of stuff. I also wanted to say I have worked a good handful of jobs. I worked a job in high school. I was, I worked two jobs while I was in college at Loyola Marymount University, and I've worked jobs after and prior to coming here. And this is the only one I've worked at where employees have been asking specifically, please, can we work more? And the powers that be are saying no, which makes me sad because I love RPV. I've lived here my whole life, but I don't always feel that RPV loves me back. And that's unfortunate because I really enjoy working here. I enjoy seeing all of you when I work city council. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marin.
Our next speaker is Aaron Humphries.
Hello, my name's Aaron Humphries.
Hey, Aaron.
This is my first time speaking in a city council in a format like this, so please, I do apologize if I stumble or anything like that. I primarily am going to be talking about the tuition assistance. As of right now, full-time employees are now able to be reimbursed $2,000 a year for financial assistance. Current part-time employees such as myself are able to be reimbursed $500 for tuition assistance. I have been enrolled at UCLA to better my education and credentials where classes are at a minimum $640, up to $1,200 per class. If part-time employees want to better themselves via education, we are essentially being asked to put ourselves into debt. We're being asked to pay out of pocket for the majority of our expenses. And the current tuition reimbursement program is, in my opinion, in need of improvement. Currently, the tuition assistance for part-time employees is unable to cover a single class's cost, let alone books, materials, and any other supplies necessary for that class. I myself have submitted a tuition reimbursement form in November 2024 to assist with the classes that I was taking at UCLA. And my tuition reimbursement form did not come in until June of 2025. My total expenses over the last year for my classes were in excess of $5,760 excluding books and materials. How a request for a $1,500 tuition assistance waiver cannot be met is something I can't understand, especially so as part-time employees are the ones being expected to use their more free time to better educate themselves professionally. Tuition costs are increasing year over year, and our ability to educate ourselves without being put into debt and pay for it out of pocket is shrinking day over day. I'm standing here asking for what is in comparison essentially a pittance to some of the salaries paid out for full-time employees. I'm asking for the ability to work more for the city, to put my time and effort into making this place better for all of us. Between the two jobs that I currently work, I'm working 12, 14, 16 days straight. I have worked for RPV holidays. I have sacrificed time away from my families for holiday overtime pay as that does not conflict with the 999-hour-a-year limit that we have on how long we can work. So I have been spending less time with my family because I need to get paid more in order to pay rent, for food, for supplies, anything else that I would need. Right now, after all of my expenses this month, I have $14.72 in my account to hold me over until the next time I'm paid. We are struggling. I am asking this council for your support to better ourselves professionally and to help us improve ourselves for the city.
Thanks, Aaron. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Will Maltz.
City Council, thank you for your time. I'll try and keep this brief. We are asking for boot reimbursements for part-time staff, not to be unreasonably denied. Part-time staff, in particular, working at the parks here, as already mentioned, have numerous duties that involve potential workplace hazards. Patrolling the park involves dealing with not only natural hazards such as snakes, but also slippery floors, uneven floors. Having work boots is imperative for a safe and effective workforce. See, a recent OSHA study found that a quarter of all workplace-related injuries have to do with the feet, footwear. Why take that risk on a pair of vans? All we're asking is to do our job safely, effectively, and professionally. We deserve to be safe, effective, and professional. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Quentin Thielin.
Hi.
Hey, Quin.
I think most of you guys know me by now, so I'm just gonna get into it. You know, this isn't an "I" issue. This is a "we" issue. We are here today asking for your support. You know, I've worked for this park for, for this city for five years, and we've taken steps, but I think we need to continue to take steps, you know? Some of the things we're asking for are not unreasonable. Some of the things we're asking for are necessary for people to live and survive as the econo- as the economy gets harder and harder for many of us to continue to work. And I want to support this city. This is a city that I grew up in. This is a city that I care deeply about. But I cannot afford to continue to support this city because I can't afford to live, okay? One of the things we're asking about that I think is most critical for our employees is a shift differential. We're asking for a $2-an-hour shift differential starting at 6:00 PM. It's been estimated by your guys' finance committee that that would cost about $17,400 per year before we calculate in for, specifically for calpers, which I think is about another $3,000 to $4,000 a year. It's about a $20,000-a-year budget change for the city for that one change. I think that's reasonable. I think that our employees who work these late hours, who work the council meetings that you guys come to every week, every other week, our employees work every week because we have planning commission as well. But the employees that work these late hours deserve to be compensated for the time they spend away from their families, especially the time when most people are available. I think we can all agree that time after 6:00 PM is not the same as time before 6:00 PM in terms of the work-life balance. So that's one thing we're asking for. The tuition reimbursement's already been talked about. Our boots have already been talked about. You know, we asked for some kind of vacation, and we're told that our ask was ludicrous. Now I'm asking for the ability to use my sick days as wellness days, and being told that that ask is ludicrous. These are days that are already, you know, funded by the city, budgeted by the city. We're not asking for an increase in the budget. We're asking to use my sick days as wellness days so I can take days off. That's what I'm asking about. I'm up here asking about a floating holiday, one, one eight-hour day per year per employee so that I can take a day off and not have to cut into my sick time. Not asking about weeks of vacation pay. I'm asking about one eight-hour day. These are the things that we're looking for. I respect a lot of you. I know you say you respect us, but I need your actions to respect us. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Quentin.
No further speakers, Mayor. No further speakers.
No further speakers. Thank you very much. Okay, next item.
Is our closed sessions items list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. As Councilmember Peristam reminded me before this meeting, we are keeping you very busy in closed session agenda items, and tonight is no different. We have four important items on the closed session agenda, the first of which is listed is ongoing labor negotiations with the AFSMI representatives who are in the audience here tonight. We meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6. We will also meet in closed session to discuss facts and circumstances which could give rise to a significant exposure to litigation in one case. The authority to meet in closed session is Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2 or D3 and E1. We are also meeting in closed session to brief you on one matter of pending litigation to which the city is a party. Title of that litigation is Ellers versus the City of Rancho Palos Verdes, Los Angeles County Superior Court Case Number 24 TRCV03701. And finally, we are going to meet in closed session with you pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9E because we are city, because we are going to ask the city council to consider whether to initiate litigation in two cases. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. We'll now recess to closed session in the fireside room. Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:45 PM. Can we get roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Ferraro.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Peristam.
Here.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Here.
Mayor Bradley.
He is excused today.
Thank you. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
And that will be led by our very own Dan Trotner. Thank you. All right. Next item.
Our next item is the Closed Session Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, particularly the viewing audience. The fault for the delay in starting the council meeting is mine and mine alone, and I apologize to you for that, but we had a lot to discuss with the council in closed session tonight. And I'm going to report on the results of those discussions for your edification. The city council met tonight in closed session to continue negotiations with AFSMI District Council 36. The city council reviewed the latest negotiating proposals for wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment proffered by AFSMI District 36. Each of those proffers were reviewed, and the council was given, the council gave its negotiating staff additional negotiating authority, but no final action or reportable action was taken. The second circumstance was that we briefed the council on facts and circumstances which could give rise to an exposure to litigation. We made a privileged and confidential briefing to the council about that. Questions were asked and answered. Direction was given, but no reportable action has been taken yet. With respect to one matter of pending litigation, Ellers versus the City of Rancho Palos Verdes, Case Number LA Superior Court 24 TRCV0371. The city's litigation, outside litigation council gave a privileged and confidential briefing on the status of that litigation and the city's defenses to be raised in that litigation. Questions were asked and answered. No reportable action was taken. Finally, the city council met to discuss whether to initiate litigation in two cases. The city staff is making recommendations to the council that could possibly avoid the need for the initiation of litigation. Council has directed staff to continue to work towards that effort. Again, no reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I should add one other little item. Given the birthplace of my nativity, today is Canada Day, Ju- July 1. And I know that some of you would like to make Canada the 51st state, but, but as a fellow Canadian, I have to stand up and say, oh, Canada. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next.
To Mayor's announcements.
Mayor's announcements. I'm gonna start with something heavy today. It's with a heavy heart that I have to announce that our beloved Gordana Swanson has passed. We would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Ms. Gordana Swanson, a longtime Rolling Hills resident, previous mayor and council member who passed away on June 19th. Mrs. Swanson worked with our city residents representing SOC, which was Save Our Coastline, an organization which was instrumental in the successful incorporation of our city in 1973. We take this opportunity to offer her family our heartfelt condolences at this time, so we'll adjourn in her memory at the end of the meeting. So that's that. And then now, just moving on to our next item here. It's, it's Parks Make Life Better Month. So today for our July 1st, 2025 city council meeting, we have a proclamation here that I have in my hand, and on behalf of the city council, it is my honor to proclaim July as Parks Make Life Better Month. This annual effort is led by the California Parks and Recreation Society, CPRS. And CPRS encourages all California cities to recognize the importance of recreation's role in building stronger, more vital communities. The 525 recreation agencies in state improve economic vitality, create lifelong memories, foster social cohesion, support development, sustain our natural resources. RPV started small with one park in 1973, now known as Robert E. Ryan Park. Now RPV has 17 wonderful parks and extensive system of beautiful trails and open spaces and open areas. We also have a dozen, dozens of classes, wonderful annual community events, including Breakfast of Santa, Trunk or Tree, the Egg Hunt, and other diverse programs serving the whole community. Now during Parks Make Life Better Month, recreation parks are providing multiple community events such as our annual July 4th celebration, which is coming up, it's with the drone show, Shakespeare, Shakespeare by the Seas production of Julius Caesar on July 6th, movie in a park on July 12th, the original Top Gun, concert in a park on July 26th featuring 90s classic rock. I encourage all residents to be part of Parks Make Life Better Month by visiting a park, hiking a trail, or come to a special event this July. And who knows, it might become a habit. So thanks, guys. Let's, we'll end up, let's present this plaque real quick, and my colleagues will make some statements as well.
Mayor Protem Seo and city council members, we've got some of our finest recreation parks department staff here. And I think as they're coming up, that big round of applause for all they do. I, I know they, the department has grown and continues to grow, and I know the department's now divided into different divisions. We've got our open space division as well as our recreation division. And so the rangers and the open space managers, they're all part of overseeing our 1,500 acres of open space and all of our parks. And so Emily is our deputy director and Dan Trotner, the director.
I know that we're running late, so I will just say I look forward to seeing everybody out of our parks this next month, especially kicking it off with Fourth of July this, this Friday. So, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Peristam.
Thank you. I'm excited about this because I don't think I've been, and I didn't know we had 17 parks, but I've been through them a lot over 40 years, and that's, you're just happy when you're in the parks. You know, it's one of those things that you just feel good you're out there, and somebody behind that's making that all possible, and that's you folks here. So well-deserved. Thank you very much, and keep it up.
Yeah, thanks. It's always fun and nice to, to be in a park because somehow it just, ah, calms you and settles you down, and life is good. So thank you all for being a part of the city park system because we need you and we appreciate you.
Yeah, I mean, thanks again. I don't think we can overstate how important the parks are to RPV. People live in RPV because of how green it is and the open spaces that are here and the pleasant environment and healthy environment that we have. I myself, in the last seven days, three different parks, both with my kids and alone. So that's just a standard week for me, and it's one of the reasons I moved here. So I mean, thanks to you guys. We have such great parks. Thank you so much.
I think we all can attest that parks make life better.
Can we give him a round of applause?
You all are great.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Aaron.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Our next item is by affirmation to move approval of the recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners, Peter Barrett and Joseph Gordon. If I may have a motion, oh, forgive me, by affirmation.
By acclamation.
Oh. Acclamation.
Everybody in, acclamation, say yay. There we go. Do any roll call because we were missing. Okay, good. Thank you.
Acclimated.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda.
Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items. I do have one person via Zoom, Curtis Yang.
Hello.
Unfortunately, Mr. Yang has not signed into Zoom yet.
Okay. Do we have his contact information? I guess we can come back, can't we?
We do. Actually, it does show that he's in person, that he signed up in person, but he's also not in via Zoom as well.
Okay. We can, yeah, we can come back. Let's go to the next part, and we circle back with him if he pops on.
All right.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem Seo, members of the city council and our viewing audience. And as, as Nathan pulls up my presentation, as you heard the city attorney say that today, July 1st, happens to be Canada Day. But it's also, if you go to the next slide, it's also Happy New Years. It's Happy New Year, Happy Fiscal New Year. Today's July 1st. It's the beginning of, of the new fiscal year. As you know, you adopted the budget at the last meeting, June 17th, and so that budget now goes into effect. But as we start this new fiscal year, it's an opportunity for us to reset. And reset is an opportunity to launch some new programs and new initiatives. And so I'm very excited to announce that we are going public and going live with a new way to engage the public and, and attract public participation at our city council meetings. And before I hand the presentation over to our IT manager, Lucas Bachwell, I do want to say what you're about to see, and we did a soft launch a couple meetings ago. We've been gradually educating and raising awareness on how this, this public participation process occurs. But I want to say thank you to those individuals that look at ways to bring technology and efficiency to the organization and keep moving us forward. And so a big shout out to our deputy city manager, Catherine June, to Terry Takaka with our city clerk's office, and of course, Lucas. I'm gonna hand the presentation over to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Nathan, do you mind playing the video for us?
The city of Rancho Palos Verdes has made it easier for residents to have their voice heard on the issues they care about at city council meetings with a user-friendly public participation form on the city website. If there's an agenda item you want to speak on at tonight's meeting, go to rpvca.gov/participate and select City Council. Then fill out the form to sign up to speak either in person at Hess Park Then fill out the form to sign up to speak either in person at Hess Park or from the comfort of your home via Zoom. You can choose which agenda item you'd like to speak on or choose non-agenda item if the topic is something that's not on the agenda. Once you've completed the form, you can receive a confirmation email with instructions. If you didn't sign up to speak before the meeting, you can do so on an iPad in the council chambers. And you can still always sign up the old-fashioned way, filling out a blue speaker slip at the council meeting and handing it to city staff. Check out our participation form at rpvca.gov/participate.
Thank you. So good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem, the City Council. It is my pleasure to present to you tonight the new online City Council participation form. So the new form can be accessed in several convenient ways. The first one is the usual, go to the rpvca.gov/participate and click on the City Council link. An iPad has also been positioned right outside this, in the hallway on the table with the form pulled up, so you can use it at your convenience. Also, if you choose so, there are QR codes posted on walls over here, so if you want to use your personal mobile device, feel free to start to scan the QR code and you can use your device, and you can register that way. So with that, let me show you really quick how that new form works. So at the top of the form, we conveniently included options and links to be able to watch the City Council meeting remotely. If you intend to participate in the meeting, simply proceed to fill out the forms, the form below. So I'm going to do that really quick. The email, the mobile number is optional, and you will, you might receive a text message if need be. So you have two options. You can either participate in the meeting remotely or in person. In this case, I'm going to select in person, and you choose the agenda item that you are interested in. So in this case, I'm going to select approval of minutes. Submit the form, and you're done. So once you're done registering, you will receive an email containing more information, including an overview of the standard City Council meeting structure and the procedures for conducting the meeting. The objective of this initiative was to enhance access and facilitate more information, including, I'm sorry, by implementing this electronic signup form, we can also manage and monitor all contributors more efficiently, particularly during the well-attended meetings with high level of participation. And upon further validation of its effectiveness, we intend to implement this new process for the City Council meeting and all other advisory committees. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. And as you can tell, we've been gradually doing a soft launch on this new way of submitting a speaker slip. And I think it'll make things a lot easier because that, the information will come in in real time to the clerk, and they'll have that, and we'll know when to call that person rather than filling out the blue slip, although the blue slip is still available for those residents. And so you'll see, we have the QR codes outside in the lobby, and we have an iPad screen where people can type in their information. So thank you, and thank you again for continuing to bring new advancement and technology to our city and making our process much more efficient. So I'm going to continue with my presentation, and I think a lot of it is going to be a repeat from the June 17 meeting, but I want to just remind the, our residents out there, if you're looking for a furry pet or a furry friend, that our good friends at Pedro Pets are having another pet and/or dog and cat adoption, and it's going to be on Sunday, July 6, at Eastview Park between noon and 3:00 PM. So if you're looking for a pet, rescue and adopt a dog or cat from Pedro Pets. Next slide. And as I mentioned, and I think you heard it with Mayor Protem's remarks, Shakespeare by the Seas coming back to Rancho Palos Verdes. In fact, they're featuring Julius Caesar, and it's going to be here at Hess Park on Sunday, this coming Sunday, July 6, and the performance will begin at 7:00 PM. And anyone who's been to one of these events, it's a spectacular location with the sunset and the ocean in the backdrop. So if you're interested in Shakespeare, if you're one of the Shakespeare fans and you like Julius Caesar et tu brute, then come out and enjoy the performance. Next slide. And I know, Mayor Protem, you made these announcements, but I'm really excited to announce because it is summertime, and you know, during the summer, we have every other weekend event at the Civic Center. And so we kicked off summer with a movie on June 14. Well, we've got another movie two Saturdays from now, on Saturday, July 12. It's Top Gun, and as you mentioned, it's the original version of Top Gun. So if you're interested, come out to the Civic Center. We, the event starts at 7:00, and the film starts at dusk, but we have food trucks, bring a beach chair, blankets, and just enjoy being out in your park and your Civic Center. And of course, we have concerts every alternating weekends, and the next concert is a 90s-themed concert. And believe it or not, if you know me, I love the 80s, but I'm sort of getting back into the 90s. And so we have a 90s concert on Saturday, July 26, and that starts at 4:00 PM. So another great way to bring out the family and just enjoy our Civic Center and your community and get to know your residents out there, your neighbors. Next slide. So 4th of July is days away, and we all know how spectacular fireworks are, but we also know how dangerous they are. And I want to remind residents out there that fireworks are illegal and prohibited on the Palos Verdes Peninsula, not just in Rancho Palos Verdes, but in all four cities. It's strictly enforced, and if you do see or hear fireworks being launched, please call the Lumina Station at 310-539-1661. The penalties, if you're caught or lodging fireworks, it's $1,000 for the first fine, it's a steep fine, it's $5,000 for the second fine, and $7,500 for the third fine. So please, let's keep our community safe. No fireworks on the peninsula. Next slide. And if you don't, because you can't launch fireworks at home, you can come out to our annual 4th of July event this Friday. It begins at 3:00 PM. It's a spectacular event. It starts off with a lot of carnival rides. We've got food vendors, we've got country music, dancing, we've got a live band, there's going to be line dancing, we've got a dance floor. And of course, we start off, all the formal announcements start at 4:30, the council's going to be there at 4:30. We'll have the kickoff, the Pledge of Allegiance, and there's the pie eating contest, and there's all these games. And I'm afraid to say, I have a feeling that we're probably not going to have a council pie eating contest this year. But we're, I'm still trying to coerce a council member in competing, so we'll see what ends up happening. If you want to know, come to the 4th of July event. And of course, the finale of that day, and it's always a lot of fun, a great time to speak with our residents, but at 8:45, we will have our drone show, and it's 150 drones. If you haven't seen it, it is really quite a performance, and it's choreographed with music, and it's patriotic music. So I think it's going to be a great way to spend the 4th of July. Come early, parking gets pretty crazy right before the drone show. So I hope to see you all there. I will be there, the council will be there, so we look forward to seeing everyone 4th of July. Next slide. And of course, with the 4th of July being a holiday, and it falls on a Friday, I want to remind residents that City Hall is closed to the public and that construction is prohibited unless you get a special construction permit, but I can tell you, it's very rare that we issue those permits, especially on a federal holiday. And next slide, I just want to end wishing everyone a very happy 4th of July, and of course, it's our 249th anniversary of our Independence Day, so happy 4th of July, everyone. And that concludes my report.
Very much. Next item.
Our next item is the consent calendar. Late correspondence was distributed earlier for item letter H, and I do have one request to speak on that item.
It's on H?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Protem, we also have, we'd like to give an explanation on item H, and we have some modifications to that as well. So I'm going to ask our Public Works Director to explain what that, some of the changes we're making to item H.
Okay.
Would you like the consent calendar item approved minus letter H, and then we'll move to item with H?
Oh, sure, okay.
Thank you.
I was going to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item H, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Peristam.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item letter H. Consideration to extend and award contracts for fiscal year 2025-26 for emergency work for the Greater Portuguese Bend Ancient Altamira Landslide Emergency Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker for that?
Report first, and then the speaker.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem, council members. So to briefly explain this item, what this item is about, first, the City Council approves the budget for the landslide emergency measures or really any city activity. But also, the council must approve the businesses that staff may buy goods and services from when exceeding $25,000 per fiscal year. And so that is what this item is about. But in no case may staff exceed the approved budget across any or all of the approved businesses. So in summary, this item is establishing a pre-approved list of vendors to call on when the need arises with pre-agreed-upon rates and other terms. Separately, staff wish to revise the recommendation and remove two of the recommended contracts because of some last-minute revisions that still need to be worked out, and those are for recommendations 15 and 22. So we ask that those be excluded from the staff recommendation. Thank you.
City Council, have any questions?
I do. Just, you said 15 and 22?
15 and 22.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
So I understand that the need to identify vendors that are approved for work. The question that I have is when, as we award these contracts, they say they're awarded on a not-to-exceed basis, but what's the contract minimum award, right? Because the premise that we had in our discussions on the budget was that we're looking for up to $9 million to claw back to achieve a balanced budget. If we approve contracts exceeding that floor, we've already taken that off the table, and that we don't want that. So we would need the amount of awarded contracts to be equal to the budget minus $9 million, in my view, to be consistent with the discussions we've had in prior meetings.
So the minimum required amount is $0. The city is not under any obligation to spend $1 with any of these vendors. There is a requirement that the city issue a notice to proceed for any dollar that is spent prior to that work beginning, so the minimum is $0.
Good.
Councilmember Peristam.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To follow up on that question, if there's somebody new in the course of the year that becomes a bidder and is awarded a contract or potentially awarded a contract, do we have the flexibility to take something that's already been awarded, an umbrella from one contractor, move to another contractor?
We do. There are provisions to terminate contracts with due notice, and there are, we are, the City Council is able to add other vendors as well as the need arises, and I believe we noted in the staff report that we expect that may occur as we find more suitable vendors for particular tasks.
Thank you.
Ramsey, just for the public certification, the reason why we have this laundry list of folks that are on deck for these contracts, is it for expediency?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is it to basically address any issues we may have in the landslide complex with urgency and, I guess, exigency?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other council questions? No.
We have one speaker.
We have one speaker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mickey Rodig.
Hey, Mickey.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Council and staff. I sent my comments in about the landslide, the late correspondence, but I'd like to emphasize a couple things in it. Number one, staff has mentioned numerous times that because of state regulations, it's very expensive for RPV to contract for medial projects as compared to ACCLAD or KCLAD. They have said that it cost RPV over $1 million to drill a deep well as compared to $100,000 for ACCLAD. RPV loaned ACCLAD over $1 million to drill multiple wells because it was much cheaper. So why doesn't RPV create a Portuguese Bend landslide abatement district for the rest of the landslide complex? Excuse me. Since the city would be the largest landowner by far in all three of the landslide abatement districts, this can save our city millions of dollars. And I think we should seriously consider doing that because you're hearing about $8 million, $15 million, well, there's a big problem there. If you can reduce those costs considerably, you can cover more of what has to be done. Further, it is costing RPV dearly because of the declaration of an emergency every month, because of the no-bid contracts being forwarded to the vendors. The vendors know that they are quoting on a non-bid basis, so they can bid as high as they want, and they are still awarded the contract. This makes no sense. RPV needs competitive bidding, and this will keep our costs down. I think this is something that our council should look into and do, and you don't need an emergency every month because we know it's been that way all along. Just go ahead and get competitive bidding. You'll save yourself a lot of money. Thank you.
Thanks, Mickey. Mickey, just to give you some edification, I think you'll like the latter portion of this meeting with your first suggestion.
Okay.
Just giving you a heads-up preview.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Is that the end of speakers? Thank you, medical. Can I get a motion to approve our staff recommendation minus item 15 and 22, please?
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number one under regular business. Consideration to receive a status report on the enhanced traffic enforcement program along the switchback section of Palos Verdes Drive East. Forgive me. I timed myself. I do have two requests to speak.
Okay, can we get the staff report first, please?
That's okay. Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and City Councilmember. Tonight, I'll be reporting on the Palos Verdes Drive East traffic enforcement. So a little bit of background, at the May 2025 City Council meeting, the Public Works Department presented a traffic engineering study recommending a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit for Palos Verdes Drive East, including the area known as the switchbacks. However, in response to significant public feedback about potential unsafe driving, noise, and near misses, the council chose to delay any speed limit changes. Council also directed staff to launch an enhanced traffic enforcement program in coordination with the Lumina Sheriff's Station. So the goal was to increase visibility, deter unsafe driving behavior, and gather enforcement data before revisiting the speed limit recommendations. Starting on May 22, a robust 10-day enforcement operation was implemented using radar, lidar, and high-visibility patrols, which you'll hear a little bit more about from Deputy Clotworthy shortly. The operation showcased a visible and impactful law enforcement presence aimed at curbing undesirable driving behavior along the switchbacks. To further support enforcement, the city temporarily closed the scenic lookouts along To further support enforcement, the city temporarily closed the scenic lookouts along the switchbacks to deter the larger groups and gatherings of the car clubs. The Lumida Sheriff's Station reported that the closure was beneficial in helping deputies concentrate on the traffic issues. The city also deployed message boards to support the effort. However, in response to public feedback that is attached to the staff report, the scenic lookouts were reopened on June 23. Existing parking restrictions, which indicate closed one hour after dusk and one hour before dawn, were reinstated to maintain consistency with city code and other recreational areas. Going into the initial 10-day enforcement, the graph that you see in front of you indicates the 10 days between 5/22 to 5/31. The unit observations means the amount of obs patrol from the deputy units. So the total patrols for the 10 days was 186 unit observations, which means they patrolled 186 times. From those 10 days, 110 total citations. Out of those 110 citations, 78 citations were speeding violations. The other citations included parking, registration, and different license violations. I want to note that on May 30, there was no enforcement that occurred due to other law enforcement activity that was occurring in RPV, and resources were needed in that area. After the initial 10-day enforcement campaign, the effort transitioned into a more sustained, targeted approach using the city's annual 575 contract resources. So for those, from June 1 to 24, there was a total of 32 unit observations, so patrols, and then about five, and there was five citations issued, all for speeding. Enforcement was led by the dedicated motor deputy, as well as the dedicated traffic enforcement car, and the available patrol deputies. It's important to note, too, that from June 9 to June 22, enforcement was very limited due to the regional LES D mobilization in response to the protests in SoCal, which pooled resources from local patrol. But the motor deputy and the traffic unit, who were assigned to the switchback area, did also notice a decrease in vehicle traffic since the initial 10-day enforcement period. So with that, I'd like to invite Deputy Clotworthy up to speak about how the enforcement was done with different LiDAR and radar technology.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Deputy Clotworthy. I'm your local community relations deputy. I'm also one of the deputies that takes advantage of that supplemental overtime budget and will be out there and do some of your speed enforcement. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about the complexities of that type of enforcement and offer you the unique perspective of a deputy who's actually out there doing there. So you guys have the opportunity to ask me any questions that you might have about that enforcement, and you're just a little bit more enlightened, as well as the general public. So what, and obviously, I was out there myself, and I spoke to the other deputies who were out there as well to kind of get a general consensus. We've conducted these operations many times over the years, not just in response to, you know, the recent things that we've seen there, the recent driving behavior. And I can tell you that it is a uniquely challenging area to conduct speed enforcement. And it's due really because of the terrain, all right, these switchbacks. You're not dealing with one, you know, long, continuous, you know, straight stretch of road where you can, you know, typically set up on one end, you know, kind of be in a, you know, a good point of vantage to be able to get speed with these devices that we're utilizing. You don't have that here, and the roadway's not very wide. It's not accommodating for us to set up in any one place. So the only way that we can actually accomplish this task is in a team of at least two, ideally three deputies. If we're doing it in a team of two, you'll have one deputy who's posted up in the residential neighborhood high above the entire switchbacks area, and one deputy down below. And the deputy who's up at the top is utilizing LiDAR only because it's the only device that was able to actually give you the range to acquire the speed at that distance. And they can typically only give you the speed of a vehicle that's traveling in only one direction. So it's severely limiting our ability to effectively enforce speed while we're conducting one of those operations. If you have three deputies, you can have one at either the top or the bottom, ideally both, and then still the one deputy who's conducting the LiDAR at the residential neighborhood, and now we're able to get them in either direction. But as you can see, it's cumbersome, and it requires a lot more of our resources than if we were to conduct this type of operation in a different area. I just thought it was important for you to know that. Let's see here. I spoke a little bit about radar technologies. There's a distinct difference between radar and radar, LiDAR and radar. The two main differences are, one, the range, and I said that we are unable to utilize radar technology at that range, and the reason being is because both are using waves, one radio waves and one light waves, to bounce off of an object and then return to our device to calculate the speed. But with a radar, the waves, the cone that the waves are emitting from the device is in a much wider cone, right? So if you're at a significant distance, that radar is likely to gather many more vehicles than the one that you're intending to get the speed for. So for that reason, we're unable to utilize that technology at the top of the residential neighborhood. We're limited to utilizing the LiDAR because it uses light waves that can travel with much greater accuracy at a much more significant range. Okay. As was mentioned by Jennifer, we had conducted very heavy enforcement on the first several days of our operation, and I can say this myself because I was out there on other days, as well as talking to the other deputies that were out there to respond, and it seemed as though our enforcement was effective. I had also partnered with the City of Rancho Palisverdes staff to disseminate social media, you know, public service announcements, alerting the community in the surrounding area that we would be out there to more strictly enforce the area. And from what I saw, the data collected from our social media account was that it was very effective. This particular reel that we had posted had a significantly broader reach than what our usual reels receive in terms of feedback. And so for those reasons, as mentioned before, we believe that it was effective, and like I said, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have specifically about how we enforce in that area.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment.
One second. Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, I have, I have questions concerning this topic, which may fit here or maybe later, so I'll ask, and if it's deferred till later, that's okay, too, and we'll go forward. But thank you for your hard work. I know it's difficult conditions up there. We had a really large and vocal constituency come before us a meeting or two back about this problem, and there was a couple unresolved issues from it. One was the potential to lower the speed limit, which a lot of constituents wanted. And there wasn't really any, there was disagreement amongst council and staff, and we decided not to do anything about that at the moment, but we're going to revisit that topic, I think, in 60 days from then, which is maybe now three meetings or two meetings from now.
August.
Yeah. And so what I want to think about, and because this is not for you to answer tonight, but maybe we'll welcome your opinions of what is ultimately final success in this, right? Final success is accidents are reduced and speeding is reduced. My concern is that we have an enforcement period of time like we've had, word gets out, people behave, and then when it clears up, people revert to their old habits again. And so I'd want to think about what a solution looks like, or what practices we put in place that result in permanent better driving on this stretch of road, and then ultimately whether there's other structural changes we need to make, like changing the speed limit, whether that would help or hurt or make no difference. So maybe not to answer tonight, but that are, those are questions I think we do need to answer at some point.
Councilmember Lewis, if I may, further down in my report, I'll indicate the future enforcement plan for LES D as well.
Yeah, go ahead. You still have more report to do, right, Jennifer? You still have more reporting to do?
Yes. This is just if anyone has any specific traffic enforcement questions for Deputy Clotworthy about their enforcement efforts on the switchback.
Okay. Go ahead. Continue, please.
I wanted to say something to him.
Please.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
I live over there, and I, I could tell that traffic on the switchbacks was down in terms of number of cars and also speed at which people go up and down the hill. So thank you very much for being there and helping us because I think it's made a real difference. Now, how long it'll take to go back to what people were doing in the first place, but I think you've made a real difference.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Really appreciate that. I'll relay that to the other deputies as well.
Please do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Deputy Clotworthy. Thank you. So a little bit more on the public communication, like Deputy Clotworthy mentioned, we did have a social media post, our education and outreach efforts complemented the enforcement, and that way the city maintained transparency through the outreach. So we did social media updates, we did the city manager's weekly report, and onsite signage and messaging. And so this effort aimed to, again, educate the public and encourage safe driving. Looking towards the future, PV Drive East does remain a high-priority area. While it is important to note that it's not feasible to sustain the high-intensity presence seen during that initial 10-day period, the switchbacks will still remain a top priority of enforcement. With our 575 contract, like mentioned, we have our motor deputy and our two traffic cars that were just filled. So with those contract minutes that we have, the motor deputy and the two traffic cars are going to enforce the traffic, or do a traffic enforcement over at the switchbacks. They still have to go and do other areas of RPV as well. And with that, too, with those motor depts, the traffic unit, we are offering the supplemental overtime when available. Public Works is also now exploring options to potentially stripe parking stalls and improve the circulation to prevent gatherings and enhance safety. That is in the process. So finally, staff recommends receiving and filing this report and continuing to partner with the Lumida Sheriff's Station to monitor and address speeding concerns on the switchbacks using all of the available tools and resources that we have available. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Do we have speakers before I go on?
Actually, staff has attempted to contact both speakers, and neither is responding. So at this time, we do not have any speakers.
Questions?
Then I'll go ahead. Questions? Thank you, Mayor Protam. One of the things we talked about a month ago or six weeks ago before we went into this process was, first of all, thank you very much. Clearly, this has had a big impact on the community, surrounding area, public safety. So thank you to the deputy, thank you to the captain. We appreciate the effort, and it's been successful. Our challenge is how do we maintain this positive results and long-term of being able to not have the ups and downs we've had over periods of time where we had problems, and now we have to make a major effort to get things under control. But my question also was, back then, we were interested in seeing the results of this in terms of data collected, and in particular, a couple of items being, who are these people? I mean, is this us? Is this somebody else? So why that's important is data collection on, at least on a zip code level, so we're not disclosing anybody, is if we're going to take actions going forward, we have to know who our audience is to make it safer for these roads, and there's a difference based on the results of that information. We have it. I'd like to see data as close as the location, maybe above the switchbacks or on the switchbacks, north or south direction, time of day, but most of all, who are the folks, the 78 data points that I'm just going to, I'm just going to narrow it down to the speeding conversation right now, so we can make in 30 days informed decisions on the actions that we may or may not take on the actual reduction of speed limits. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Kevin?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. To answer your question, it's not normal procedure for us to actually gather citations and, you know, get the zip codes and input that and get that information, but this time we did. Out of the 110 traffic citations, 60% of those that were cited were residents of the area. What we did was, we had our crime analysts actually pull each site, which, again, is not normal practice, and gather that information for us for that data. So it is 65%, but nonetheless, whether it be residents or non-residents, as far as educating the neighborhood, that should be an ongoing effort as far as speeding and if you see something, say something as far as the switchback. So we did identify times and days that were, that we are going to target moving forward. So as far as sustainability, it's a lot easier for us, once we've targeted these times and days, to actually put the deputy, motor deputies, traffic deputies, area deputies, deputies, period, who are working those shifts, to target these areas during those times.
Can I follow up?
What?
Okay, great. First of all, thank you.
Sure.
Is that information available to the city?
It is not.
It is not?
No.
You understand our concern to have it as a tool to make decisions?
Sure.
Because I'll take a little bit issue about where people are from in the 6535 is, it's actually very helpful. More slicing and dicing that data would be maybe more helpful also. So if we can get that data, even if it can't be public information, and I think that, and we could do that, but if our staff can have that information, that will be helpful as input in 30 days?
I might, I might say you could anonymize the data, too. If you take out the name and street address and just leave city and zip code, you know, take out license plate?
Sure.
Then the data's anonymized, nobody's privacy is compromised, and yet it's, the value is there for us to do the analytical work we want to do.
Sure, we can do that.
Legal can advise whether that would pass muster. I think it would.
It could pass muster. Thank you.
So that's why he gets paid the big bucks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jennifer, quick question. The million-dollar question is, based on, I guess, everyone that's involved, obviously Deputy Clotworthy and the other deputies that were there at the switchbacks and cut into citations, from your background training experience and the actual being on the ground, do you think a speed reduction is necessary in that area, changing the speed limit? That's the million-dollar question.
Mayor Protam, I don't think that's a question that should be directed.
Well, here's the reason why I ask that, is because if we're doing the enforcement, right, and we're going to ask a question anyway. If it's, if it's dependent on speed and it's dependent on situation, we need to know that. And if it's based on the situation and not the speed itself, then we have a different analysis, right? So, you know...
So, Mr. Mayor Protam, some of these topics potentially create an exposure to litigation that we could probably talk with you about in a privileged and confidential setting. So maybe some of these data and some of this discussion is best saved for a future closed-session agenda item.
I had to ask the question.
No. Fair enough. Fair enough. And I think what, you know, tonight's item really is a receiving file. Just to give you an update, I think what we want to do is take all this information, the data that you're asking for, and then come back August 5 with, with the recommendation. Of course, we need to consult with our traffic engineers, who basically establish speed limits based on speed surveys and a certain percentile. So we've got to factor all that in, and of course, what we've all know is there's driver behavior as well, and sometimes you can't control driver behavior. But if we can just put that question in a holding place for another almost 30 days, and we'll come back with some more information at that time. I hate to put our public safety manager on the spot there. That's why you had that awkward...
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, and just so you guys understand, we're very appreciative of all the hard work and that you guys have put into it, and I know it's the yeoman's task, and that, you know, you guys enforcing on that side of the hill and managing the switchback also takes away from the other policing duties that you guys have. So my hat's off to you. Thank you very much, and obviously, you guys made a noticeable difference, and hopefully that changes the behavior of the drivers in that area, because if we have 65%, it's residents, I think it's a matter of... I think it's a matter of education and saying, hey, you guys need to slow down and not be disruptive and manage hours they're doing, whatever they're doing on that switchback. Hopefully, they're not drifting and whatnot. But the biggest thing is making sure that we educate them and say, hey, citations will be cut and it needs to be not disruptive to the people that live around that area, especially for Councilmember Farrar here. So, I just want to say thank you once again. I appreciate it. And we'll circle back on more information. Is there any other comments from councilmembers? No?
Just that it made a big difference. It really did. So, I appreciate you all taking the time and the, you know, the manpower to do this survey because it really made a difference on how many people were going up and down and at what speed.
All right. Now, with that, can I get a motion to receive and file, please?
Move to receive and file.
Roll call.
Councilmember Lewis? Councilmember Farraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Parisdam?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number two. Consideration to receive updates on the Greater Portuguese Bend Ancient Altamira Landslide Complex. I do have three requests to speak.
All right, let's get staff report.
Mayor Protam Seo, before I hand it over to our Public Works Director, two things I want to point out is, first and foremost, today is our city geologist, Mike Phipps' birthday. So, I just want to give him a big shout-out.
Happy birthday!
For being here. And I tried to convince him to have some cake. So, thank you for being here. That's a huge commitment. That's a testament of who you are as a person. Oh, good. Thank you.
Oh, that's cool. I had your cake.
I didn't bake it for him, but, you know, he had a slice, so.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
There was a purpose for it. Yes, yes. And secondly, in this staff report, I just want to note an error in the staff report. Embedded in the 30 pages or so of that staff report, we had a statement that basically said later on tonight's agenda was a discussion on the assessments for the Abalony Cove sanitary sewer system. That item was actually pulled from this agenda and is going to be on the July 15th agenda because we didn't put the notice out. So, that was an oversight. I just wanted to clarify that that is forthcoming on July 15th. So, with that, I'll hand it over to the Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor Protam, councilmembers.
Good evening.
I'll start with an update on the city's deep dewatering wells or DDWs. The overall production of dewatering remains high, although two deep dewatering wells have run their course and have been decommissioned. So, we now have a total of nine operating. You see the statistics there on the screen. I won't recite those for you as you can see them. But what I want to focus a little bit more on is the key metric for dewatering success, and that's reduction in water pressure under the slip planes. In reviewing the data since the last update for the reduction in water pressure, we continue to see a reduction in water pressure under the deep slip plane and a more pronounced reduction, as you can see the slope of the line between March and May, has increased as we began re-drilling some of the deep dewatering wells. That's for the posometer that is continuing to function. So, that's good news that we're continuing to achieve reductions in the pressure. We also looked at the mid-deep slip plane. And again, we're continuing to see reduction in water pressure there. It also appears that with the upper posimeters that there's some migration of water down. And so, that's also relieving some of the pressure, which is good news as well. So, we're seeing that reduction across all levels. Next, I'll go to the ACLAD update. ACLAD has brought additional deep dewatering wells online, which is also good news. Their production rates have increased, as you can see there. Although without power from SCE, the dewatering wells are not running 24/7. And so, that does hinder some of the production. An additional two deep dewatering wells are in progress and two monitoring wells have been installed. And we're beginning to read the data from those wells, which will be provided at the next update. For KCLAD, also good news for KCLAD. Their two deep dewatering wells continue to be operational, although one is now on standby because their water level has dropped sufficiently that only one well is operating at this time. So, that's good news for KCLAD as well, and they continue with their drainage improvements. Those are the updates on the deep dewatering program. And next, I'll turn it over to Mike Phipps for an update on movement and geology. Mike?
Thank you, Ramsey. Good evening, Mayor Protam and city councilmembers. So, first, I want to talk about rainfall. We've had a dry winter. This is kind of a repeat of what I said a couple of months ago. 6.58 inches of rain, so that's only 48% of the annual average. That's been very beneficial. And what we're trying to figure out and what we're tasked with doing now is trying to understand, okay, how much of the decline in the movement is simply due to the fact that it hasn't rained as much versus the impact of the dewatering wells? And so, that's what we've been really focused on doing. And we're still gathering data and kind of focused in the Abalony Cove area now where ACLAD is installing wells. And we've got good data points all around there, posimeters in the ground. And I think we're going to get a really good picture in the next month here. In terms of the movements, really, the theme is things are decelerating. Abalony Cove landslide has decelerated 14%. The Portuguese Bend, 11%. The Upper Altamira expanded area of movement, about 13%. This is between April and June, so over the last two months. And, you know, but we have to remember, you know, things are still moving. The fastest area that's moving now is the Abalony Cove landslide. Average about 1.3 feet per month, so it's still a significant amount of movement. So, Ramsey's got the overall movement rates, the heat maps up there. And if you can cycle through those, maybe start from, can we start from last year and go forward? Yeah. You guys have seen this before, but it's really interesting what's happening. Yeah, as we go into this year, January, February, things expanded a little bit with a little bit of rain that we did have. And then, going into March, April, May, June, things really start to shrink down. That teal area is shrinking down. And so, now that fastest-moving area is kind of at the head of the original Abalony Cove landslide. So, I think we're starting to see the impacts of the deep dewatering wells that ACLAD is installing because that area over there is shrinking. The colors are shrinking, and I expect that to continue as we go into the summer here. We've also looked at, we've looked at some of the conditions along Palisverdi's Drive South. Our team has been looking at remediation measures for the slope at Wayfarers Chapel and have come up with some information for Ramsey and his group to consider. We've also looked at the road conditions recently all the way across the landslide. There have been reports of sinkholes and fissures. And really, what's happening is just a repeat of what's been going on for the last couple of years. There's a big zone of fissures that cuts across the Portuguese Bend landslide. And the city has been just constantly trying to fill those in and patch those up. And sometimes the asphalt bridges over these fissures. And as the movement continues, sometimes they open up underneath and then it looks like a sinkhole, but it's still just a fissure. So, we're actually developing some additional suggestions and recommendations that we're going to present to Public Works about things that could be done to maybe improve that condition a little more than sort of the repeat things that have been being done over the last few months. So, that's pretty much what we're going to, pretty much what I have to talk about today, other than this graph. We prepared this to show sort of overall movement trends using October 2022 as a, sort of as a proxy where, you know, we call that, okay, that's a factor of one. And you can see the movements in October 2022 were very small. .06, .17, .14, .08. And that's in inches per week. And then, as we got to October of 2023, when the city declared the emergency, things had picked up by a factor of five to six times. And then, as we got to the peak movement after the crazy rains in January, February of 2024, those factors had increased to anywhere from 65 to 115, basically, times what it was doing in October 2022. Now, as of June 2025, things have slowed back down to a factor of 12.5 in the Portuguese Bend area, 26 in the Abalony Cove area, and 40 in the Upper Altamira. So, we're not quite back down to where we were in October 2023. But the other thing that we've plotted here is, which is interesting, is the decrease from the peak movement has been 100% in the Klondike Canyon landslide. It's no longer moving. It's been 81% in the Portuguese Bend landslide and 65% in the Abalony Cove and the area above Abalony Cove. So, it's a significant reduction in movement. I think the PBL reduction is greater than the Abalony Cove and Upper Altamira areas because that's where the deep dewatering happened. And that's sort of an indicator that what's been done is working. So, that's all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be here.
Thank you. City councilmember? Go ahead, Paris.
Carson, thank you. Sorry to drag you out here on your birthday, Mike, and to put you on the spot. So, I have a couple of questions. One is, when we talk about movement here, are we talking about just horizontal movement? Are we, how do we measure vertical movement? Because any regular rider over the landslide area knows that it's a different experience on where we go up and down and look around and we're a lot lower.
That's true. What we're talking about here, what we've always been reporting for the last couple of years, is horizontal movement. And yes, there is a vertical component. It's nothing close to the horizontal component. I mean, this overall landslide is dipping from the back to the ocean at about 10 degrees. But it's not a perfectly planar surface. It has undulations in it. And where we have those undulations, a 200-foot-thick mass is sort of riding over a bump in the subsurface geology. That's where you get these fissures open up. And that's where you get some of these vertical movements. Up at the head of the landslide, Gordon Leon was telling me the other day, it's like, seems like there's a lot of vertical movement. I said, well, that's because you are up at the very head of the landslide. And most of that movement is more down-dropping because the slide plane is very steep back there. Then, when you get out into the neighborhoods, Narcissa and Cinnamon and down below, the slide plane is a lot flatter. And so, the area where the fissures don't show up are usually very intact blocks of landslide that are, it's like a giant raft literally moving down the hill. There are places further down in the lower third of the landslide, especially in the Portuguese Bend area, where we've actually seen some of the survey monuments. They're dropping for a while and then they actually start rising up again as it's moving horizontally. And then, they're starting to drop again. And that's literally the GPS point riding over some bump in the subsurface as it's moving 30, 40, 50 feet over the past couple of years. So, yes, we do look at the vertical. It's nowhere near as significant as the horizontal. The horizontal movement has been extraordinary in what's causing the bulk of the damage. But it's, you know, it's accompanied with vertical movement.
Do we have some data point, sorry?
Councilmember, if I may, I just want to clarify for the record that the GPS surveys do read horizontal and vertical movement. So, we do record that.
How many data points do we have on that?
We have about 100. I don't remember the exact count, but about 100.
So, we're getting that information for vertical movement on those 100 data points as well?
That's correct.
So, we are tracking that. We know the impact of that?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Good. All right. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. It seems like something we just never specifically talked about. It's always been the emphasis on horizontal. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Councilmember Lewis, do you have anything? Okay. Councilmember Farrar?
No.
Okay. Can we move on to the speakers, please?
Certainly. Your first speaker is Jeff Bassler.
Yes, I apologize. We've got.
We've got more?
A little bit more, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Some financial stuff that we want to go over, yes.
Before the financial, over to our community development director, Brandy Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and city council. I'm going to go over the voluntary property acquisition buyout program just because I know we haven't really had much conversation. It's been in the staff report every 60 days, but it's, I wanted to give an update. On October 28th of last year, the city FEMA and CalOES announced the $42 million voluntary property acquisition buyout program. And this is for property owners in the landslide complex whose homes have been damaged or threatened by land movement. It was established with funding from FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or HMGP. And the buyout program is intended to help eligible homeowners relocate to safer areas by offering fair market value for their properties based on pre-disaster appraisals. Properties acquired by the city through this buyout program will be permanently converted to open space and deed restricted, protecting the community from future redevelopment risks in these vulnerable areas. The deadline for the property owners to submit applications was November 8th, and the city received a total of 85 applications. In January of this year, the city started the procurement process for appraisal, title, and escrow services for the program. At the end of January, FEMA issued a request for information, or RFI, requiring details on the budget based on appraisals and additional information. In order to respond to the RFI, the city had to complete the appraisal process. In February, the city completed the review of the red and yellow-tagged properties for the program eligibility and finalized the prioritized properties based on the program guideline criteria. And there were 23 of the 85 applications were then moved forward. On March 18th, the city council awarded the contracts for the various program services, including appraisals, title companies, and escrow firms. In April, the appraisals were authorized and conducted on the 23 prioritized properties. And as well, in April, the city staff collected that FEMA-required information, the different forms from those prioritized applicants. In May, the appraisals were completed and issued to the 23 property owners and the appraisal appeal process was initiated. At that same time, the city collected additional required forms and documentation from the applicants for the response to the RFI. In June, one of the 23 applicants withdrew. However, based on the appraisal values and the appeals, it was determined that the budget for the first round would only cover the remaining 22 applicants. So, there was no replacement application that will be considered for this round at this time. The city finalized the response to FEMA's RFI on June 27th and CalOES officials, oh, and the CalOES officials submitted the response to FEMA. Then the next slide. There's not, of the 22 properties, 13 are red-tagged and nine are yellow-tagged. There is not a definitive timeline for when the first of the 22 properties may be purchased. The city is still in a pre-award phase for the grant process with FEMA. Once the award is issued by FEMA, since the grant is on a reimbursement basis, it is expected that the acquisitions will be completed in batches of approximately three properties at a time, since the city has to front that funding. And then, with each, when each next batch would then be acquired once the city would receive the reimbursement and have the funding available for the next batch. The CalOES standard practice is quarterly reimbursements, but we're making a request that they'll have that reimbursement on a rolling basis so that as soon as we make an acquisition, we can immediately submit for reimbursement. So, at this time, that, you know, it may be several months before we even get the award from FEMA. That concludes my presentation on this.
Brandy, quick question. Wouldn't we be thinking that we'll have a conclusion or like the end state of all the acquisitions? Do we know? Do we know?
If we're if if we have to go based on that quarterly reimbursement, it may take two years from when it's awarded for for the full acquisition. And that's just based on what we, you know, and working with the finance director on what we confront in in doing about three acquisitions at a time. If they can do that on a rolling basis, it might it might be a lot quicker that, you know, that we can can turn those around and and, you know, maybe it's an eighteen-month or twelve to eighteen-month period for that.
Got it. Thank you.
I'll provide just a few other brief updates before turning it over to our finance director. For the staff is working on a rank priority list with cost component breakdowns and plan to bring that at the August nineteen meeting. Other updates, Cal OES has approved the city's notice of intent to apply for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That's really the first hurdle to apply for the grant as the with the revised scope of the project. So that's good news that we've cleared that first hurdle, and Cal OES will support the project moving forward. We're continuing to work on scope for hydrology and hydraulic study in conjunction with the landslide subcommittee, as well as developing a proposed scope for PV Drive South Toll Road Study. The structure at forty-three sixty-two Exultant is pending an AQMD permit for demolition. And finally, the Wednesday landslide working group meetings that were being held on a weekly basis or near-weekly basis are now being scaled back to two times per month. With that, I'll hand it over to our finance director.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, City Council members. I'll provide the financial report. Make it give it a minute here. Okay, I'll start with the financial report from October twenty-twenty-two to June twenty-twenty-five. Later in the slide deck, I'll have the current fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So for for total from twenty-twenty-two to June twenty-twenty-five, we're at forty-eight million. Focusing on fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, that's approximately thirty-six point eight million, or seventy-seven percent of the forty-eight million. Going from the top there, the deep dewatering program at nineteen million, winter station at four million, road repairs at six point five million, Abalone Cove sewer repairs at five point five million, and the remaining items are less than four less than four million. Next slide here, this is similar to what you see every sixty days. This shows what the city council adopted in twenty-four, twenty-five at four point six million. Majority of the changes happened on October one, twenty-twenty-four, where budget increased to almost thirty-two million. Since October one, twenty-twenty-four, up to our last report, that budget increased by approximately almost five million, with total budget in twenty-four, twenty-five at thirty-six point eight million. Showing some expenditures here for actual expenditures and encumbrances by month. Looking at October twenty-twenty-four at four point three million, a lot of the purchases or encumbrances and expenditures in December twenty-twenty-four, as you could see, for June twenty-twenty-five, since we last reported in May, total expenditures and encumbrances was at thirty-two point three million. Tonight's report and the staff report tonight includes thirty-three point one million, with the remaining balance of three point six eight million. And we'll process those invoices. Again, our our year-end closing takes about two months. We have until end of August to process anything, any services provided in June, and we'll have a report for you once that that's all completed. On the right side is the funding source at thirty-six point eight million. As you could see on the right side, fifty-four percent or twenty million is funded by CIP Fund, nine point eight million or twenty-seven percent by General Fund, and the remaining are funded by the grant LA County Grant, ARPA, and Metro Funds. Next slide is the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Improvement Program. As stated in the staff report, these projects will also be brought back in the next sixty-day report that a report that will go through these for additional information. So for twenty-five, twenty-six, for CIP Fund, thirteen point seven million, and for special revenue or restricted funds at four point one million. This slide here combines from twenty-twenty-two to this fiscal year, June twenty-twenty-six. So for October twenty-two to June twenty-twenty-five, as presented earlier, that's about forty forty-eight million. Combining city funds, general fund, and CIP, that's approximately eighty-one percent or thirty-nine million funded by those funds, and eight point nine million or nineteen percent by special revenue funds. Looking at the current budget at twenty-five, twenty-six, thirteen point seven funded by the CIP and special revenue funds at four point one million or twenty-three percent. When combining all years since twenty-twenty-two, this would amount to sixty-five point eight million, and approximately eighty percent is funded by city funds, which is the general fund and CIP. Finally, here, just a recap of Capital Infrastructure Program Fund, or the CIP Fund. If all projects are complete or expend as as adopted, the general or the CIP Fund would have an ending balance, a fund balance of seven point two million. Five million would be held for reserves and two point two available balance at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six. Next slide here, also included in the staff report, is the financial report for A-CLAD and K-CLAD. These funds are are not city funds. These are the district funds. We did receive their financial report as of April twenty-twenty-five. So for A-CLAD, ending April twenty-twenty-five, their total spent is one point eight million. Currently, they are over budget by one point two million. Their adopted budget was at five hundred nine eight thousand, and they are over by one point two million or two hundred two percent. On the K-CLAD, adopted budget at five hundred seventy thousand at the end of April, spent approximately one point two million, over budget by about seven hundred thousand or one hundred twenty-one percent. As you can see on both and the slide here, majority of the expenditures are from operating and maintenance for wells for both districts. And finally, just an update on on the FEMA grant. As reported in the last report, about ninety-nine percent were denied of the sixty-one point four million that we applied for. Though we did hear last week after the staff report was posted, the city has been obligated of approximately four hundred seventy-six thousand for debris removal and emergency protective measures. There are we are still waiting for the official letter from Cal OES, and as soon as we receive that, we'll bring that back at the next report for City Council. And that concludes the financial report.
Any questions from City Council members? Avina, can you go back two slides to the, yeah, on admin costs of one hundred fifty-eight grand? Do we know what that is? I think we asked this previously, but I didn't I didn't know if you knew or not.
Oh, Mayor Protam, the twenty-two thousand admin costs or fifty-one?
No, the for K-CLAD?
Four hundred fifty-eight.
Do we know what that is? Like what that entails? Because I know it's an administration.
I could check. I do have the details, but I would have to exit here. I could look into it.
It's not urgent. I just want to know. We can get it offline. Yeah, we'll get it offline. Councilmember Ferraro, questions? No? Okay. Okay, is that the end of the brief, guys?
Actually, Mayor Protam, those are majority of the twenty-five, twenty-six are legal fees.
Ah, okay. So interesting. Okay, I'll circle back with you guys on that. Public comment?
Our first speaker is Jeff Bassler.
Hey, Jeff.
Rancho Palos Verdes casual here. It was thirty degrees warmer when I got in the truck to come here than when I got out of the truck here. But Jeff Bassler, president, yeah, president of Abate Local Nineteen and member of the State Board of Abate of California. Before I get into what I was here for, I have to recommend you guys get into the pie-eating contest, because it sounded like a lot of fun last year. So you got to step up. You got to do it, too. And the reason why I know that is I was here last year after the Fourth of July and got that report, and everybody was having a ball talking about how good a time it was. It has been over a year that Rancho Palos Verdes Drive has been closed to motorcycles. And I do not see a plan to avoid having that continue. I just see another sixty days kicking the can and another sixty days kicking the can. And I think it's time to start thinking of other alternatives. Best thing I'm coming up with is it's not safe for four-wheel vehicles to go fast through that stretch. So like you were talking about with the the bend area of Palos Verdes Drive South, speed limits may be a solution for you. You know, knock it down to twenty-five miles an hour heavily enforced, maybe even twenty, fifteen, ten. It, you know, for somebody in a little car like a Civic, it's not very safe to go through there at speed either, you know, at posted speed. So it's a liability for them. It could be damaging their car. They can come back on the city for that, just as much as a bike can go down and somebody come after the city for that. But if you have a low speed limit, and they are violating that, and that is part of why they go down, that also removes you from liability. But we need to get away from discrimination against one form of transportation over another. It is no safer to go through in a small car with a low clearance than it is to go on a motorcycle. And so I strongly encourage you to be looking into something as an alternative to continuing to kick the can for sixty days. Trying to be patient, I've had several people encouraging, looking into legal ramifications for the discrimination, and I've encouraged them to hold back because of the understanding that you guys are in a tight situation. It's not a normal situation. Our main concern really is that it doesn't become precedent. We don't want people in, say, the Mulholland Drive area decide they don't want motorcycles. So it's a safety issue. There might be sand on the road or something, so we can't have motorcycles. They did it in Rancho Palos Verdes. We can do it here. So we really need to bring this to an end soon. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes?
There has been a legal resolution. We've we are getting claims for people who are violating the rules with respect to that drive, and we've been successful in defending those claims in court. We just had a recent ruling in our favor for an automobile traveling at an unsafe speed, notwithstanding the warnings. And what did the court say? The city's warned, the city's posted signs, the city's given caution, and the city has no liability for people who are foolish. And that will continue. So we're we're comfortable that there is an appropriate legal remedy available to the city. We're prepared to defend the city's actions, and so far, the courts have agreed with us.
That should stand for motorcycles as well.
Thank you, Mr. Senior Attorney. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Nikki Nushkam.
Hi, Nikki.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I have the K-CLAD financial, the K-CLAD, A-CLAD financial up, please? Thank you. Members of the council, staff, thank you so much for the opportunity. First of all, I want to thank the staff and the council for the continuing work on the landslide and the good news all around that was shared as part of this briefing. I'm here because I have some concerns. I think Mayor Protam actually touched on one of them and would appreciate the council's help with this matter. So as as you all know, the council, you guys, gave a loan for one point nine million dollars to K-CLAD for them to work on basically showing up and handling the Klondike Canyon landslide activities. Suffice to say that in more recent engagements with K-CLAD, we have come to learn about some disturbing trends, one of which is administration costs. If they have spent money on legal, that was not my understanding is the terms of the loan that the city provided them. Those receipts of their legal expenditures are posted on on their website, so you can easily pull them off, and it is not one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. They have been spending about thirty-six thousand dollars at least for services such as getting someone to type notes, getting someone to organize files to figure out where things are, and so on and so forth. You, as the stewardess of the money that you have lent them, are responsible for making sure that they properly spend this money on landslide activities. Multiple requests have been made by not only myself but other residents of the of the K-CLAD district for financial information, including in writing, and none has been provided. So I would request this council to to request from K-CLAD, since you are going to be paying additional money to them as part of the assessment, to get additional information from them. I also would like to make you aware of their Resolution twenty-five dash one, which is in violation of the Fourth Amendment. So the resolution specifically states, without using any kind of protocol or data from the city with regards to whether somebody's home is red-tagged or yellow-tagged or de-energized, without having any guidelines, that if they feel like it, and you don't pay your assessments on time, they can turn you into District Attorney's Office, without knowing what the assessment guidelines is for habitability or what what they believe is is habitable or not. They're not following any protocol whatsoever.
Thank you, Nikki.
Our next speaker is Eva Alujia.
Hi, Eva.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My glasses are broken, so I'm wearing my sunglasses. They are so subscription, so excuse that. Good evening, everybody, city council, city staff. I would like to echo what Nikki has just said. I am going to be forwarding you an invoice that I just received from K-CLAD stating that they are paying an invoice of thirty-two thousand one hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents to a admin fee of the company called Gafon. In the invoice, it talks about website costs. It talks about also sitting in meetings, and Gabriella is the one that's heading this this invoice. But I've never even seen her. I don't know what she does, and this invoice just appeared because I've been pressing on what they're spending their money on. It's very concerning. Also, if you look at the bylaws and information, which we have requested for that, too, and they haven't supplied it, but I have seen somewhere written that legal fees cannot be passed on to the residents. She had written information is to do wells and to support the landslide, not to support legal fees. If K-CLAD was transparent from day one twenty years ago, we would not be in a lawsuit today. They have never been transparent on their what they had spent that what they have spent on assessment assessment fees. We have asked for two years, what have you done in the last ten years regarding wells? Where are your invoices? Where did our tax money go? And they do not supply it. This is why we are in lawsuits with K-CLAD. And I don't want the money that has been lent to K-CLAD to go to other activities. That's one. Two is the repairs that we just have had on PV Drive South. The repairs that were conducted the last couple of days has been just a smearing of asphalt. When we drive PV Drive-- When we drive PV Drive South, it's very dangerous. It needs a better coating, a thicker coating. It's crazy that that street is still open for driving. It's dangerous. And we need more fixes. And I know you guys are maxed out to the hilt over here. I know we're not getting help from the government. But we also have to look at safety and maybe even make that into a one-lane street because the tension on that road is pretty stressful for that road right now. I appreciate all the help that you guys have done. I know this is a big, big project, but again, thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Our final speaker is Gordon Leon, only if you have questions.
Hi, Gordon. Do you wanna say something?
No. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
No. No, no comments? Nothing?
No.
Okay, so, um, just as a reminder, I think Councilmember Perristam, you're gonna make a motion.
Yeah, our discussion, any other questions to, to staff or anything, or are we cleared? So I'll, I'll make a motion.
Please.
If that case. Okay, thank you. I'll make the, uh, Mr. Rourke's, uh, motion that he was alluding to. And that is to, um, uh, accept the staff recommendation and add, amend the motion and add a section. And the addition of that section would be to ask the staff to come back and define what it takes to form a third geological hazard abatement district. I mean, we're talking around this. We're hopefully, uh, in the future, being able to address this. We are paying a lot historically for this. And it's time that we take the action to see if we can more efficiently go about our work going forward. So if you need more details of that, I, I can provide it. But I, I think it's well-understood by the council of, of what that next step is. And to lay out that timeframe and that roadmap for going forward and formulating that, that third district.
Okay, so just to clarify that amendment, or addition, excuse me, is to staff directed, or direct the staff to see what it takes to create a geological hazard abatement district, a third one, and to discuss it in an open format, I guess at the appropriate meeting, when you guys can.
Sure.
Yeah, and that, that's my understanding. And we can bring an item back, if not August 5th, maybe the second meeting in August, that outlines the steps to take to, um, to form a third geologic hazard abatement district in the, in the center area known as Portuguese Bend.
Yep, yes.
Councilmember Lewis, do you have something to say?
I wanna make a, is this part of the, this existing report?
It is, yes.
Okay, then I want to, I'd like to amend your motion with another motion, or I'll make a competing motion. Either one.
Did you wanna add something, or did you wanna just amend?
I wanna alter language in one item.
Say again?
I wanna alter language in one item.
In which item?
Item three.
Item three. Go ahead, what's the amendment to?
So I would, I would be in favor of what Councilmember Perristam just said. And I would amend item three, the language in it to say, extending for a term of 60 days the temporary prohibition on travel by unicycles, bicycles, and other one- and two-wheeled vehicles, excluding licensed motorcycles on Palos Verdes Drive South.
Amendment accepted. Based on those amendments, can I get a second?
Wait a minute. I wanna understand what you're adding to that.
We're removing the prohibition on motorcycles.
Do you think that's wise?
I think it's fair.
I don't.
Councilmember Perristam?
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple of questions on that, since we're opening up a, a, a new discussion for at least the new council members here. Can you help us for context setting from the previous council on why they excluded motorcycles and unicycles from, actually included them in the prohibition?
I think the city attorney could better explain it.
And, and Councilmember Lewis on this, we can get some historical context.
The roadway's not safe, and it's a significant legal exposure to the city. And we just think it's unwise and counsel you not to do that, but you're free to do as you deem appropriate.
And, and I should remind the council that we have had claims by motorcyclists that have injured themselves and are now pointing at the city, saying it's our fault.
Yeah, long story short is this, is the, the road is still moving. We, we pave and it breaks up again, and then we have, it exposes to litigation, which has happened already multiple times. And the accidents that have occurred are because we told them not to go on it, they still go on and they sue the city. That's basically what's been happening. Now, I understand that there are some proponents of lifting the ban and, and lifting the, uh, the prohibition, but I don't think it's a wise decision at this time, in my opinion. And if we do do that and exposes us to litigation again, it's gonna happen consistently and often, in my opinion. And I think that's something the city cannot burden or take on at this point. We already deal with closed-session items that deal with it now, and if we lose these, we don't have the budget to actually sustain it. And that's, that's historically what's been happening.
My, my amendment to the motion was based on what I thought I heard. Council advised us that the signage that we've put up has successfully defended us against a number of claims, number one. Number two, we had a report from our geologist that said that the rate of the landslide is slowed and even stopped in some areas. There needs to be some objective standard of when the road is simply safe again. And if, if we're not gonna make this decision tonight, I would ask that we come, come up with the determination because there, there is a, a matter of fairness here that needs to be taken into account. This can't become a permanent thing. It's, that's just not right. It's not, you know?
But I don't think that...
Go ahead, Councilmember Ferraro.
Thank you. I should have asked permission to speak. But we cannot sacrifice safety over people that want, you know? It's just like, even though we have prohibited them to go on motorcycles, there are still people who have done it, and several of those have been injured. But they've take, I mean, they have to take the responsibility. But if we say to them, it's okay to go, then we take the responsibility. And, I mean, even tonight, when I came here, there was a portion of the road that, that was up and down on the, the far side, and it's constantly changing. And I know that you want to get back on the road with the bicycles, but we can't, as a city in good conscience, permit that when we know that there are so many that, that have done it and been injured, and the road is still changing. I mean, maybe in one spot, it's not moving, but there's a big place that I ran over tonight that, that's damaging to cars as well as to, to motorcycles. And I don't wanna see people injured down there. So I can't support the motion with that amendment.
Mayor Pro Tem, how do, how do we proceed at this point? Is it a, a fail for a second? Is it a rejection of the amended motion?
You wanna, if you wanna make an amendment to number three, and then we vote on it, and then based on the vote, what we can do to make it clean is just vote specifically on that and pick that out. Mr. City Attorney, we can do that.
You could do that.
Just to make it clean, we can vote on that specific one.
So you could, you could, you could move approval of recommended council actions one, two, four, five, and six, which is the addition.
Correct.
And then come back and specifically address Staff Recommendation Three as a separate motion.
Yeah, we could do it that way as well.
Is, is that the only way, or? Or just let the second motion, motion, if it doesn't get it up?
I think it's a waste of time if we do it all once again. I think we just take it single, have the discussion now, take the rest of the items. Cause I think, I think we all agree on the rest of the items except for number three, correct?
Well, I'll, I'll, I have no hesitation here. I, I reject Councilman Lewis's motion, so if that helps in, in how to move forward.
Okay, so then you don't have a second for the amended motion. So we now have a motion on the floor to approve items one, two, three, four, five, and the add-on six.
Correct.
So you just let it fail, then?
We would just move to, move staff, staff recommendation with the amendment, with your amendment, which is item number six, and we'll just call, roll call vote on that. We had a motion and second on that already.
Okay, I'd like to ask then, in this case, that we begin with staff to come up with an objective measure of criteria, under what conditions the road would be reopened, so that not subjective, it's objective, it's not CYA. It's like, these are the requirements that make it safe and therefore lawfully licensed by the state of California, drivers can use the road.
We already know that.
Well, so I, 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 I think, I think Councilmember Lewis raises a fair point. An argument could be made that that entire road should be closed, period. But there is a practical reality that motor vehicles must use that road for purposes of ingress and egress onto the hill. But you could make a legal argument that it's unsafe for even automobiles. But you have to balance that against the practical reality. So then when you get to the question of motorcycles, unicycles, and bicycles, you could say, there is not enough demand for public access into and out of the hill to justify allowing those kinds of vehicles on an unsafe road. I, I think that's a perfectly rational part of the decision-making. It's not discriminatory at all. It is an acknowledgement that the road is inherently unsafe, and we warn against that, and we set speed limits for that, and we acknowledge the fact that on, as, as, as Councilmember Ferraro pointed out, on an almost daily basis, that road changes. I drove that road today. There appears to be a couple of cracks there that I don't remember from a week ago, but I'm not on the road every day. So at the end of the day, it is a balancing of risk. And even automobiles have to be extremely careful as they traverse that road. And we've warned, and we've posted, and we, uh, and we slow traffic when we're doing work on the road. But it seems to me, from a legal perspective, that while we have to accept a certain amount of risk because of the need for, for motor vehicle access, we don't need to accept that risk for two, uh, two-wheel vehicles, be they licensed motorcycles, licensed bicycles, licensed e-bikes, unicycles. That's just a road too far from a legal exposure, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's the biggest reason for me is, is the liability. I don't think it's an equity or discrimination issue. It's more of a safety and liability portion at this time, for me. The liability and the risk is too great to the city. Cause let's say there's a tacit or express lifting of this prohibition. I think that would, you know, basically tell the community, hey, the road is safe because we just take, we just took an action to basically let all the motorcycles, bicycles, and unicycles bike back on the road. And based on that, let's say there's an accident that happens, and then we get motorcyclists or somebody that crashes, and they say, hey, the city said it was okay, and now all of a sudden, we got this huge exposure now we gotta pay out for, or we, God forbid, we, somebody dies or something, and we have to pay out for that. I don't think the city's in a position to be able to absorb that kind of loss. So for me, at least, I think even if we ask the, the staff to come up with an objective standard, I think it's gonna be, is it safe? And how do we? I, I don't know how staff is gonna come up with an objective standard for that. It's just...
No, it's, it's the rate of movement. Though the, Palos Verdes Drive South, despite some areas that are showing no movement, Palos Verdes Drive South continues to move in certain sections, especially on the western portion, but we're also seeing it on the eastern portion. We continue to pave. We see, um, the roadway opening up. And that's the concern and the difference between two-wheel vehicles versus four-wheel is that when the road starts to open up and we don't have enough time to respond, a wheel can get stuck in there, and we've seen people injure themselves. We're more concerned with people injuring themselves. We haven't received, uh, or, or heard of any motorists injured, but their cars have been damaged, but not injured like bicyclists and motorcyclists.
Sounds like the beginning of a solid objective measure, to me.
Sure, and we can, we can, we can come back.
You, you might have to inspect the road every day, then.
Yeah, so my, my thing is this, if you, if you, if we ask the staff to do something, you know, are they giving us three points or are they giving us 17, right? I just don't, I just don't see the, the value in it at this point, because ultimately it comes down to, is, is the land moving? Is it, is it zero? Is it three inches a week? Like, I think we can come up with that, but I don't think we should burden the staff of asking them to come up with a list of objective standards, in my opinion, at this point. I, I just don't see any value in that going forward. I just, ultimately, it's gonna be how much movement there is.
Okay, I mean, I, I stand alone here, so...
I, 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 Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I could also add?
Yes.
There's nothing we're doing here that's setting a precedent for anybody else.
Correct.
If somebody else has a landslide like our landslide, God bless them, they probably oughta ban two-wheel drive vehicles. But I don't think you can take the circumstance on that road and apply it to other roads that don't have the same kinds of problems. I just, I'm not persuaded by the precedent argument.
I, I agree with that. Does anybody have any other comments? Councilmember Lewis? Any finishing thoughts? No? Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you for the discussion.
So I'll ask for the original motion, so it's, uh, it'd be approving or recommending one, two, three, four, five, and then the addition of the amendment made by Councilmember Perristam. Is there a second?
What is the sixth, um, addition?
Coming back with the, uh, the creation of the Portuguese Bend Geological Hazard Abatement District in an open forum to have discussion and see what it takes.
I think it was important to say that, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Perristam?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, say oh.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our future agenda items.
Uh, anyone have any future agenda items? No?
Our next item then are the city council oral reports.
Oral reports, anyone?
Well, I just hope that everybody will come to the Fourth of July on celebration on Friday. And remember, it's later, from 3 until 9, so that we can have our, um, special program at the, in the dark.
In the dark.
Councilmember Perristam?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I attended the Rolling Hills Riviera HOA Ice Cream Social previous Saturday. Always a good time. They find a different cul-de-sac to have this in every time, and I don't know how they do it. They have different thing to eat. It's always about food. And I appreciate the, uh, the chief for always supplying officers. We had both the fire department and the sheriff's office represented, so it was a good time. It was a nice, cool day, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis? Nothing? I got invited to a couple of things. I went to a Korean War, Korean War commemoration, the 75th anniversary out in Fulton. They celebrated the 75th anniversary of the start of the war, so they recognized Korean War vets, uh, which is beautiful. The other event that we attended was the Juneteenth Celebration in Manhattan Beach. They had a ceremony for that and just to recognize what happened and go over the history of it. And the last one that I attended was the ALADS banquet to recognize our heroes from LASD. It's a great event. And they recognized the valor of the LASD sheriffs and what they did also. There's a big group of them that got recognized for their actions during the Eden fires and the Palisades fire. And it was a wonderful event. And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything before I close? And I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of our beloved Gordana Swanson, uh, once again. And we, uh, take this opportunity to offer her family our heartfelt condolences at this time. And I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:38. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.